Okay, so I made Annika call. So we're in there. She can continue to let people in. Okay. And do you have to hit to record? He's recording. I'll get it. Why is that not letting me? Well, they'd have to hit it again after the regular, after the executive session anyways. So I'm just gonna go ahead and we can hit it after that. It's not letting me record to the cloud. Okay, well, he's gonna record. I don't know. We'll figure it out. I think one of those. I'm gonna call. All right, I won't hit record yet.
Okay, good evening. It is 6:31, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to Order. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. If you wish to join the Zoom meeting, the meeting ID is 865-3049-4155. Once again, this meeting is broadcast live to the local cable access channel and on the public access Facebook page, and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting, and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion, to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. And I would like if you are able to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business is executive session. It will not be long. I know I have people who have come here to make public comment, and we wish them to do so. But we will have to first go into executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than the professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. So do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will do that. Just for the public, Mr. Beardmore is not with us this evening and will not be on Zoom. I hope to be back in just a few minutes. Recording in progress. And the school committee is happy to take public comments for any reason that falls under our jurisdiction. And I would ask if the committee would like to waive the 10-minute total time this evening.
Motion to waive the 10-minute total time?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And once again, you have a three-minute limit to your comments, but we are happy to hear them. And Mr. Schoenbrini, will you be the timekeeper?
Oh, Madam Chair? Can I propose that our students not have to give their home address? Like most public speakers do? For privacy reasons.
All right. Mr. Schoenbrini, I'm gonna have to look at you on that one.
I mean, so, without providing legal advice, I do not believe that it would violate FERPA, and that you do not have an expectation of privacy in your home address. However, I think all these kids are pretty honest, and they all live here.
What if we just have them attest that they live in Lunenburg?
So it's just as part of the discussion, I feel like it would just, I think they should give the address, just as a citizen would.
As a citizen would, yeah. Oh, all right. And if you're very uncomfortable doing so, please state that you live in Lunenburg. How's that? Okay. So if you are making a public comment, you need to head up to the microphone.
Good evening, actually. Mary Foyle, 985 Flat Hill Road. I'm president of the Lunenburg Education Association, and speak on behalf of employees who work and have worked tirelessly through trying times, and times where often trying even before a global pandemic. As a visual, my public comment is written on a printout of school per pupil expenditures for every district in Massachusetts, ranked from those spending the most to the least. Lunenburg is highlighted on the last page. Teacher put this together for me. I didn't spend my time on it. And this is actually an improvement. Sadly, for those of us who have taught here for years, this is often our norm. Though these cuts are more significant than in other years, we've been making do for a while. Teachers have learned to spend school budgeted money at the start of the year; otherwise, they and their students are penalized because a frozen budget in November means an inability to purchase needed materials later in the school year. Teachers and parents donate supplies for students to have a more full educational experience. Or LEA members take years of no raises or partial freezes in order to make the budget work. This can't keep happening. Though education has become a more difficult field to attract and retain people, this has not typically been a Lunenburg issue. Now, we are losing employees not simply to move closer to home, but for significantly more pay and support elsewhere. Others leave the field completely after working here, and we can't fill positions or have to offer a job to multiple people before someone accepts. It's heartbreaking to say that these are not signs of a vibrant district. This can't keep happening. We've stayed here because we love teaching and our students, and feel invested in the community. However, job expectations continue to grow, and our budget does not keep pace. Proposed non-personnel cuts save money, but increases workload and decreases student and staff efficiency. Monetary cost savings often carry a significant cost elsewhere. In our current education climate, this cost worries me. What you see in those who've left and in current employees is that your staff can't keep doing this. We are doing our jobs for our students. Please do yours for us and them. We need to do differently. Lunenburg Public Schools operates on a razor's-edge budget each year, spending less than most districts, while achieving better, because the educators and the parents in this district make up the difference. Lunenburg cannot constantly rely on the same course of action yielding the same results. This can't keep happening. I implore you to take hold of the vision of the education our children deserve. Consider, articulate, and move towards what that looks like in action, not mere words. Provide a learning and working environment where people are proud to learn and be employed, and others vie for a position in this district. Be the vulnerable and courageous leaders our staff and students need and deserve. Be the leaders and school committee members who stand up and say that this is not good enough. This can't keep happening. Ooh, I text.
Thank you, Mary. Another comment?
Hi, I am Sophia Muller, and I live at 139 Cove Road.
I'm Kara Horunkwitz, and I live at 165 Gilcrest Street.
Today, we held a meeting in, after school, with a large group of students involved in the music department, and we gathered ideas and bullet points. We wanted to hear their ideas about it as well, and I'm just gonna read off some of those. It is more difficult to start learning an instrument, or any skill, the older you get, and it is imperative to start the music education program as early as we can, which for us would be in the fifth grade. That's not our opinion, that's just science. The parents of the kids involved in music in Lunenburg give their all. They are generous and selfless towards this department, and have given up their time, money, and energy for us all. It goes without saying that the department would not be half of what it is without parent support, and that of the music aiders especially. If you belittle this department, they will not go away, but instead have to work even harder to keep music education in Lunenburg afloat. Extracurriculars are vital in Lunenburg. Just look at the numbers of those involved in sports, and how successful they are. If the fifth-grade band is cut, the sixth graders are starting from scratch, which does not set them up well for marching band or jazz band. These bands are just important as, are just as important as sports. When transitioning from eighth grade to ninth grade, the numbers are reduced in the high school band and chorus, because people are, like, they're... Yeah, you wanna elaborate on that?
Sorry. I was just in that position last year, and those guidance counselors will convince every single kid that they need a study, that they can't do it without a study, and there's already a bunch of scheduling conflicts, so you end up only taking up, like, less than a third of the students in the eighth-grade band into the high school, but that's more of the fault of the way that our guidance departments.
It is more of a personal school issue than something that has to do with the budget, but it's just another example of our department being sort of belittled and put on the backburner. Numbers in middle school band and chorus lower when there's no fifth-grade band, that's just a fact. Kids who love and are passionate about music, even if they want to learn it on their own, may not qualify for some scholarships when applying to college that they would have been eligible for if they had been able to take band and chorus all throughout elementary, middle, and high school. Some kids are scared that music is too hard and are discouraged by the small numbers that we have in our school, so they decide not to join band and chorus. Because the rehearsal time for high school band and chorus is essentially cut in half due to the classes being in the same period, what is stopping us from just hosting more rehearsals after school? That time?
No, you got 10 seconds.
Oh, okay. But the problem is that we shouldn't have to do that when we have such an excellent staff and teachers who get paid to, that they should be the ones doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Hello. My name is Noah Lind. I live at 95 Gilcrest in Lunenburg, and I am a band student who was brought to Lunenburg Music Department for all of my middle and high school years. As a freshman, I take a large amount of responsibility in helping out the music, or music program. This year, the sixth and seventh and eighth-grade bands are thriving, showing a bright future for Lunenburg, for Lunenburg music. However, this could have not happened without the fifth-grade band, which bridges the gap between elementary and middle school music education. If the fifth-grade band is cut from the budget, the music program will begin to lose members. The marching band would be negatively impacted as well. As currently the only drum line member, I could safely say that the future generation's understanding of music would decrease dramatically, making the chances of a future middle-high school marching band for the years to come seem bleak. Also, I have seen that there are some supposed cuts to the current high school band teacher, where the electives he teaches, such as music tech, will be non-existent, while band and chorus will still be supported, which is great. These electives are a safe haven for many students, such as myself and my friends that came here to support the music program. To have this taken away from us, as well, would be a damaging blow to the courses that Lunenburg has to offer. My parents moved here over 11 years ago, partly because of the school system. My mom was a band student who cherished the band the same amount, if not more than me. We can clearly see that many families are flocking to Lunenburg year after year because of the school. The new proposed budget for the music program would weaken one of the main foundations of the Lunenburg Public Schools, one of the main reasons why many families chose to move here. So, given this information, if you choose to cut any part of the music program, you should think about the repercussions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Passios?
It's a tough act to follow.
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. Speaking to you as a lifelong citizen of the town of Lunenburg. The previous, I caught the end of the previous, previous speaker and this one here, and I have been wanting to make a comment in regards to the extracurriculars. I understand the position you guys are in. It's tough. I stated that to you over a month ago. But the extracurriculars, I was a band geek from grade three forward in the school system, and that was a big chunk of my life through late elementary school, middle school, and especially high school. The experiences that kids get with extracurriculars and things outside the box of the general education requirements are the things that bring them into the future and help guide them as to what their true interests are for the long term. Again, you know, I know the problems that the town and the school district have from a budgetary point of view, but we've gotta balance these extracurriculars as to, if they're taken away, how much does that affect those students down the road? And unfortunately, requirements trump extracurriculars in most cases. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Arshimo, our student rep also has a comment. You can stay there.
Tatum Furman, 1024 Massachusetts Avenue. I am a student in 10th grade at Lunenburg High School. I have lived here for eight years since 2015. I have gone through multiple extracurriculars, including basketball, softball, mock trial, student council, and, yeah. These extracurriculars have not only shaped me into the person I am today, but also helped me make friends and countless bonds with teachers or coaches. I get that these, these may need to be cut for reasons that are out of people's control, but having these shapes kids into what they grow up to be. I found my love for softball and my love for mock trial through the school. I would have not found these and had these opportunities if our extracurriculars were cut. I know many students have many different extracurriculars that they enjoy, and they find solace in them, along with friends and coaches who support them throughout their life and throughout their college decisions. While I think it is a shame to cut extracurriculars, I know that sometimes it may be necessary. But I do hope you take this into consideration, that the extracurriculars at our school, whether they're in kindergarten, whether they're in fifth grade, whether they're in middle school, or whether they're seniors in high school, they, these extracurriculars, shape the people at our school into who they are today and who they grow up to be.
Thank you, Tatum.
My name is Kallen St. George, and I live at 38 Francis Ave. Music is something I'm truly passionate about and have found a community in. So if you cut any part of the music program, it's cutting and reducing our education. Fifth-grade band is a vital stage of learning music. It is scientifically proven that it's easier to learn some, anything, including music, at a younger age. I never had the opportunity to be in fifth-grade band or chorus, but it would have been beneficial to me so much. By taking away fifth-grade band, it is making the middle school band smaller in the future, thus leading to the high school band and marching band being even smaller. So please, don't take this amazing opportunity away from anybody, especially these little kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Hello?
We can go, we can go, I have one more person here who had gotten up, and then I'm gonna go to Zoom. So you go right ahead, and then we'll go right to Zoom.
Hello, my name is Joseph James, and I live at 756 Northfield Road. I have been a member of Lunenburg Bands all the way since I've been in fifth grade, which was seven years ago now, and I have thoroughly enjoyed the experiences gained from it, and I think that not only has it helped just my music career, but I also think it's helped my academic career, showing me the value of working with other people, and pushing to, and the benefits of pushing through to work, working towards something that you might want to get, learning a hard lick, or something of those kinds. And I think taking away the fifth, I think taking away the fifth-grade band would drastically decrease the numbers in our band, and that's taking away from the experience of all the people who might continue band, which would harm not only just the band people, but it might also harm their academics as well, because one of, if you, the people who enjoy band will probably also enjoy going to school more, and if they enjoy going to school, then they will probably do better in all of their things, as they have a better mentality of the, school as a collect. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go over to Zoom.
Brandon Harris. Brandon, you're, you're up to make your comment now. Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brandon Harris. I live on 8 West Street in Lunenburg, Massachusetts. I have been a member of the Lunenburg Music Department ever since I moved here back in April of 2016. And to be quite honest with you, ladies and gentlemen, I have fallen in love with this, because I've been singing in choir, in school choir, ever since I was, ever since I was in third grade. And no matter, no matter what songs we sing, no matter how, no matter what grade I'm in, no matter who the teacher is, I have fallen in love with singing for Lunenburg. And it has been brought to my attention that there are possible reductions in the extension of the music program in Lunenburg. And I just wanna say that with music being a very crucial part of every young person's life, whether they, whether they are or not part of any sort of musical organization, whether that be choir or band, music plays a very important role in the minds and souls of the youth, and I feel that by reducing the choir and band in any sort of way would cause, would cause, would cause just a massive, just a massive defeat for the student body. And in short, I love singing. Don't take this away. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
I'll let raise hand feature. Anybody on Zoom, if they would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. I'm not seeing anyone.
Not seeing any. If there's anyone else here? Yep. Come on up.
Hi there. My name is Lily Jordan Yates. I live at 120 Robbs Hill Road in Lunenburg. I have grown up playing sports through Lunenburg programs, all the way since I was a little kid playing basketball, to now I am a junior in high school playing all these sports. And it is really hard to watch our middle school programs get, like, threatened to be lost, because those are a bunch of feeder programs into our high school programs. I would never have really known about the intensity level of playing field hockey, the intensity level of playing basketball or softball, without those programs. And so many kids meet so many friends through sports, and they gain a sense of community through the sports they're playing. I know Tatum from softball. I know so many people. I have made lifelong friends through these sports, and it's a really crucial part for kids to grow up, having these extracurricular activities, whether it's band or chorus, which I never took part in, but I know a lot of people love it, or sports. People always have their favorite thing to do. So I just ask you to take into consideration, like, how much this will affect all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Dina Cassim. I don't currently reside in Lunenburg, but I grew up here, and I still go to the school. I think that cutting middle school, like, school, like, sports would be a big mistake. Like, when I was growing up, all I wanted to do was join sports in middle school, because, like, you're young, so like, you could basically put yourself in whatever and, like, learn from there. If, like, you took a kid that was in eighth grade and just, like, threw him into a sport, I mean, it's possible, but they're not gonna have, like, the same amount of, like, I don't know how to describe it, like...
Like, right now, we both are on the track team, and there's multiple middle schoolers that have been helping out our team so much, and like, them not having the opportunities to, like, be in middle school sports, because there's also, like, middle school track in the spring, and them not having the opportunities to be in those programs aren't gonna help them get better for their high school seasons that are coming up in there.
Yeah, I feel like putting myself into middle school sports when I was in middle school helped me, like, grow as a person, because I wasn't, like, really good at, like, making friends. making friends or like bonding with other people. And then when I like did like basketball, that like brought me closer together with everybody, and it like made me want to be an athlete, it gave me something to do, and like, it made me happier overall as a person. Same with band. I was in band for, what, like three years, and that really shaped me, like, I really, I don't know how to word this, but, um, oh my God, this is, um, it was just a really good program, like, um, most of it is like the connections you make with people, like the things you learn, and I don't think I would have had those experiences if they weren't available to me. That's all.
Thank you very much. Any other comments this evening?
Can I just make a quick comment?
You certainly may. You get a turn to comment.
I think that every time that we do an open public comment and the students speak, I learn new things that I didn't know before, and I'm also really impressed at how good they are at collecting their thoughts and taking time out of their day to come and talk to us. So every single person who talked, I will tell you that I changed my mind the last time we had a meeting like this, and the things you say do make a difference. Like, I think about every single student, I've written down every single thing you guys have said, so it does make a difference, and it is very compelling to hear the students' talk.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other comments?
Go ahead. Okay. Um, that took a lot of courage. Guys, um, I've been there. It's scary standing there, um, like we're up on a stage and looking down. It's scary, so I don't know, I'm feeling pretty good about the school district right now, that you guys had the strength and the courage to get up there. That was wonderful. Um, thank you for sharing. Okay, can I do my, I've got three things for public comment.
Okay.
All right. Uh, number one, I wanted to say thank you to the PTO for putting on the special someone dance this weekend. Uh, it was fantastic. My kid got to go with her special someone, and from reports, it was a really wonderful time, and the kids had a blast. I heard the DJ was really good and, uh, played a lot of good music. Uh, so I also wanted to say thank you to the volunteers for putting that on. That's a lot of work to organize that and put that together. Um, thank you for everybody who set up, everybody who cleaned up after, um, and made that happen. That's a lot of effort. And we also had local sponsors for it, so thank you. We have a bunch of local sponsors, local businesses, so thank you to them as well. And it's really great having events like this that bring the school community together outside of school, and lets the parents and the kids kind of mingle, so thank you for that. All right. I got another one, which is, um, a lot of parents are asking, what can we do? Um, and I've been thinking about it a lot, uh, how we can turn how we're feeling about the budgets into action. Uh, number one is for, uh, parents and those of you over 18, you've got to come to Town Meeting. In Lunenburg, um, we have a form of government called Town Meeting, where the voters are the legislative body. We vote on the Warren Articles, new town bylaws, and we spend the money. It goes through Town Meeting. Each registered voter gets one vote. Um, and we, as the legislative body, approve the budget. The Finance Committee makes recommendations to the town manager, the town manager presents a budget, and we vote on it. It's in our best interest as a town to pass a well-balanced budget that maintains services to both the town and the school. Um, but the authority to pass that budget lies in Town Meeting. And this is important, because there's not a lot of people who go to Town Meeting. It's a handful of people, which means that it's a handful of people making the important decisions about the town we live in. It's the people who show up to Town Meeting. It's those votes that ultimately make the decision. So I'm asking, begging, parents to please go to Town Meeting, and people who support the school system to come to Town Meeting. And I know that's asking a lot, because it's a Saturday in May, which as parents, we are busy. It's a Saturday in May when it's lacrosse games and soccer games and dance. It's a couple hours long, you got to sit in the auditorium. It's hard. It's hard to find the time, and for some reason, Town Meeting is always on like the nicest, the first nice day of May. I don't know why. The sun is always shining, and it's hard to go into that auditorium for a few hours on this beautiful Saturday, but you got to go, you got to participate. Things are ultimately decided at Town Meeting. They're not decided in Facebook comments, they're not decided in emails, they're decided at Town Meeting. There's not a lot of representation from parents there, because it's hard for us as parents to go. I know that in the past few years, we've had childcare available, and I hope, really hope we can have it again this year. People don't always avail themselves of it, um, and I know it's hard to get there. Um, but that is one action you can take to participate in that final part of the budgetary process, is to go to Town Meeting, and not just this one, I mean everyone. Go to every Town Meeting and participate in that process, so that we can pass a budget that we're happy with. Um, the second actionable item that I think it would be good to put our efforts into is at the state level. So I'd like to encourage people to continue to write to and to continue writing to our state reps and our state senator, um, and to continue to write to them, talk to them, call them. I know that we've had a lot of people reaching out, and it's been fantastic. Keep doing that. Um, let them know as voters that school funding is a priority of yours. Chapter 70 in Massachusetts is a really complex funding structure. Uh, the Finance Committee did a presentation on it. You can find it on YouTube, on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube page. Um, and if you haven't seen it, last week, the Finance Committee also did a great presentation on Proposition 2 and 1/2 and property taxes, and how the rates can increase, but only 2 and 1/2% each year, um, unless we do an override, and they really go into that in detail, and it's a lot of good information, so if you haven't seen that yet either, I recommend that. Um, but we are limited in the funds we have available right now. Chapter 70 funding in Lunenburg has remained relatively stable. Uh, there was a large jump in fiscal year '23. Um, I believe that was because of the development that was finished, and we, we added, um, some housing. But funding in fiscal year '24 actually fell by 1%. Um, so we got less money in FY '24 than we did in FY '23, but our costs as a school district didn't fall by 1%, which means that the town had to shoulder that cost. Um, but at the same time, the town is limited in how much we can increase revenue by Proposition 2 and 1/2. So as a parent, I can say I would like it if more of my state tax money would go towards the schools. It's more equitable if more of our state tax money went to schools, but right now, it's becoming more and more dependent on property taxes and the value of homes in the town in which you live. Um, we're not the only school district dealing with budget shortfalls this year. We are by far not the only district. Districts across the state are dealing with this. Everyone is dealing with the rising costs. It's not just us. Everyone is dealing with the loss of ESER funds. We've been planning for it long-term. I mean, as soon as the money came in, we knew it was going to end. Um, my first meeting with Dr. Burnham was, we talked about the ESER funds. It's been known for a long time. Um, but the extra stuff, it hits us extra hard, because we're a small district, so it's harder for us to bear the increases, because we're small. We're not regionalized, we're a small town, we don't have a huge pool of revenue to call on, so this hits us extra hard. Um, and because we already ran pretty efficiently, we're already asking our teachers and our staff to do a lot with not very much, so there isn't a ton to trim from. It's not like we can look at the budget and trim the fat, because it was already a pretty efficient system. So I would like to encourage everyone to please continue to engage with the state reps. Continue to reach out, ask specific questions beyond the platitudes, let them know that school funding on a state level is something that you value, that public education funding is something that you want to prioritize. Uh, and then number three, um, of my public comment, I just wanted to say thank you to all the parents and students and community members who are engaged in this process. Um, two weeks ago, we had a lot of community members come and speak, we've gotten a lot of emails, I've gotten a lot of texts, um, and I want to say thank you for caring, thank you for showing up, thank you for your communications, um, thank you for your engagement in this process. Um, something that really struck me about both last meeting and all the emails and comments is the tone is almost universally, how can we help? It's framed as how, as, how can we as parents be a solution? How can we find solutions? How can we work together? What can we do? Where can we put our efforts? It's really special, and I think it's a testament to the kind of community Lunenburg is, and I've really been struck by how a lot of it is about working together to find a solution that best serves the educational need of our kids. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the committee with a comment? Okay, then we will continue. Um, next is the Chair's Report, which will be very brief, but I want to make a very quick thank you to, uh, thank the Finance Committee for the very good job that they did last Thursday night, explaining, as, um, Mrs. Brzezowski said, the legislative process in this community and how schools are funded, and for their continued support. It is much appreciated. Um, I've met with Senator Cronin, Representative Kyrshmerik, and will meet with Representative Scousdale tomorrow, uh, trying to figure out a way forward. As Mrs. Brzezowski said, we are not alone in this fight. So the only tidbit I have from the representative and the senator is to try and gather like communities, and that's what I'm doing. I'm adding a list together of communities like ours that are being hit, and their advice is to find very specific ways that they can help at the state level, to hone in on specific, they said line items, we don't know what they are, but we do know if, if our concerns are extracurriculars being cut, if our concerns are interventionists being let go, if our concerns are, um, literacy or math-driven, or special education-driven, or whatever, those specific things are very helpful to our representatives. So if you do contact them, please tell them that, and know that I'm doing the best I can from this end to, um, to see if we can get some additional support from our state legislators. They, they get it. They understand the mess it is. Um, so if you can give them some specifics, they appreciate it. All right, that's what I have. So now we have, um, FY '25 Budget Question and Answers, which is different from public comment in that, um, people can ask specific questions. So it wouldn't be the time to say, I want you to do this, it would be the time to say, can we try something this way? Or, or, um, how much does whatever, um, cost, or why was this cut instead of that cut? Those kinds of questions. We'll do the best we can. This is still an ongoing process, and no final decisions have been made about anything, really. So if you have questions, you're welcome to come up and ask the questions, and we'll answer them as best we can. Once again, you would have to state your name and address.
Mary Foyle, 985 Flat Hill Road. I might be too early on this one, but in reading questions online, this is what I pulled from last year, and it did, it was the final recommended sheet that goes back a few years and, and has the line items. Um, is it possible, I know this one came out in March of last year, for last year's, I don't know if one came out sooner, and that's just the latest one available, and I know we're short people, so I'm not trying to put anything on people's plates, but I think in some of the questions that I'm seeing, like this would actually be helpful for people to see, and, and for those of us who might get the system more, to explain it with something like this, um, as opposed to slideshow. Do you know what I'm just, yes?
We know it.
I don't know where it is. I'm just totally blind.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's the line, the general line item breakdown.
Bajj's spreadsheet.
Yeah, um, and it goes back the past few years, but just, it's hard to explain to people, based on the other spot, but if I'm too far ahead of the game for when we normally put this out.
A little bit. It's in process.
Hi, my name is Shoshana Mulay. I live at 139 Cove Road. I have a question about the process. So I understand about Prop 2 and 1/2, and my question is, so you guys are in your budget process, and in March, you're going to vote to recommend a budget. Can you vote to recommend a budget that is more than 2 and 1/2%? Can you say, based on all of our work that we've done, we recommend this is the right thing for the school this year?
We can do that.
Okay.
Um, if you have, if we recommend a budget that is more than 2 and 1/2, that means somebody else gets less.
Yes.
So the process is done together as a town, but yes, to answer your question, yes, we can do that.
And is that something that you've done in the past?
Yes, I think we have, yeah.
I mean, I'm not talking about 5%, it's just that I think that I've learned so much in the last couple of weeks, and this is going to be very much on the margins of some very painful things and some slightly less painful things. So I just want to understand if you are in fact allowed to say, no, we really need 2.7% or whatever the number comes out to be.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so that's, okay, thank you.
That's on the table.
Hi, once again, I'm Kara Horncovitz, 165 Gilchrist Street. I'm just wondering, what's the plan moving forward for future years? Because we know that this time next year, we're probably going to be right back here with new cuts for the next year, so is there a plan moving forward? Is this going to be the end of the cuts? Like, what's the plan?
That's a very good question that I wish I had an answer for. We have, like I say, I'm working with the legislators to see if they can do something. The Chair of the Select Board has an idea for something to go to the State House that would do something about this mess. There, there are people trying to fix this problem. The other option is if the town should decide to do an override, that, that would fix the problem, at least for the time being. But as long as the tax levy has to stay at 2 and 1/2%, when inflation goes up more than that, it, it, we're not rocket scientists, but we have that figured out, that doesn't work. So, um, we are trying to figure out a way, so that we're not here next year doing the exact same thing. I'm sure that some of your parents are trying to figure out a way, so that we're not here. I know that the Finance Committee is trying to figure out a way that we're not here. I can't tell you I know what that way is.
Thank you.
That was a really good question.
It is a good question. It's one I've been asking myself quite a bit, and the representatives. Are there any, oh, certainly.
Can they come to every meeting? Excuse me, can they come to every meeting?
My name is Cecilia Stanek. I live at 43 Hollis Road in Lunenburg. I just want to know, like, where all of the money is going? Like, how is it, like, distributed to other people? And I just want to know, like, just how, like, how we're here today.
So where the money is going? So do you mean like in the school budget?
Mm-hmm.
Where all that money is going?
Yes, I just want to know, like, like, what's happening? Like, why are we getting all these budget cuts for like people like me and others that like don't like fully grasp, like, how we're losing this much?
What, what happened is, we're, we have so much money that we spent on the budget, and every year, certain things go up, and we And we try to keep things so they don't go up more than 2 and 1/2% because that's all we can get that's extra from the town, is 2 and 1/2%. That is the state law, okay? It's not something somebody around here decided on. And actually, it's a very old law. When I first came out of college, that's when it was put in. So, it was like in 1982 or something. It's really old, like me. So, what happens is you get to a point where you cut things out of supplies as much as you can because our most valued resources are our students, of course, but after that are our staff members. So, you don't want to take from that bucket. You cut everything else you possibly can first. And then there's not enough money because health insurance went up, because the bus contract goes up, because of inflation, just like you know, when your parents go to the grocery store now, it costs a lot more than it used to because everything is going up. That's why we're here. They're not giving us less than our 2 and 1/2%. But it doesn't go as far as it used to. Does that make sense?
That does make sense. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Layton?
Can I just add, I would say also, a lot of those items that you mentioned are going up more than the 2 and 1/2% too, just so everybody knows.
Laura Borusian, 389 Malpus Road. I had a very nice conversation with Mr. Sheldon in the music department. And one of the questions I have is, who would be the appropriate person for me to speak with about applying for grants? And other things in part of my professional career, I'm a chartered advisor in philanthropy. So, I work with organizations like private foundations, corporate foundations, in finding ways to supplement sometimes the districts that are hit really hard, and I understand the struggle that you guys have. Who would be the appropriate person for someone, a citizen of the town, to speak with?
That would be me.
To talk about applying for grants, he needs a Zoom phone, he needs, you know, big-ticket items that could really, you know, help supplement some things. Love what you guys are doing and helping us with that and everything that the students have said. But that way I can reach out and we can talk about what the appropriate things are there that we can do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We would appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else?
So, I'm, sorry, my name is Joseph James. I live on 756 Northfield Road. I'm not sure if this is a question you would be able to answer, but do you know if other parts of Lunenburg are suffering the same budget things that the school is? Like, is the, because I know that the Esther funds are a large part of why we have such a large budget deficit, but also things like inflation and health insurance going on. Are things like the fire department, the police department also suffering very similar budget deficits? Or is it not impacting them as much?
The town is having trouble raising money as well. I don't know what their cuts are like because we own more of the budget than they do. The school budget takes up slightly more than half of the town's budget. So, the police department, let's say, is a smaller slice of that pie. So, they're dealing with, there isn't quite as much money. Their health insurance went up more than 2 and 1/2%, the same as ours did. But I don't know what their deficits are. What happens is, from now until mid-end March, every Thursday night, the Finance Committee meets here, and each of those town departments come to the Finance Committee and say, "These are the things we want to do for next year. This is our budget." And that's when I would find out how the rest of the town is faring. But I know from speaking with the Chair of the Select Board, things are very tight on the town side.
And a question following that is, is the Finance Committees on Thursdays available to the public?
Absolutely.
They also do hybrid meetings, so you could get on Zoom.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sophia Muley at 139 Cove Road. I have another question about the grants. So, I had a similar question to what Ms. Borusian spoke about, and some of it was answered. It was a good question. But something was brought to my attention today at the meeting me and my dear friend Cara held with some students and a senior who is involved in art, visual art. She was at the meeting because she has also been involved in music before, and she brought to my attention that the two teachers who teach visual art in the high school have been sort of protected a little bit under a grant that they received. That was just brought to my attention, and no?
No.
It's not a thing?
Their positions have nothing to do with the grant that's at play here for them.
Is there a grant at play at all?
There was a grant through
The Cultural Commission.
And we also pursued curriculum review type of a grant to review our art curriculum. Neither of those helped pay for their positions, nor can they be used to pay for their positions. The reason that there aren't cuts recommended there is because of the number of students enrolled in our art classes. Those class sizes are very full.
Sure.
Whereas our music classes are not.
Sure. Yeah, I might have actually misspoke. I didn't mean influencing their positions as teachers to, like, be kept in the school, more the program. But that answered my question, so thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Did any of the money from the Artist in Residence Program end up at the school, or was that all?
No, that's controlled by.
Okay, but none of that went to anything for the school specific, other than?
No.
Took place in the school?
They pay the artist, they may pay for some of the materials that the artist would use when they come in to work with the students. But that money is not a grant, it's not a grant we pursued. It's a grant that the Cultural Council pursued. They have control over it. We don't.
Anything else? I don't see hands raised on Zoom. Do you see any? We will do the same question and answer the first meeting in March.
And people can still send questions by email to lps@lunenburgschools.net. We respond to those emails, and any questions that come in, I can add to FAQ 2.0.
I find that helpful.
That we can post. So, I would encourage anybody, you don't have to wait until the March 6th meeting if you have a question. You can send it along anytime.
Mrs. Archimbo, our student rep needs to leave. Can she give her report now?
As soon as we're done with the questions and answers, we'll jump right to you. How's that? If we, looks like we probably are done, could I just have a motion to move the student representative report to now?
Motion to move the student representative report to now?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, you may go ahead, Tatum.
Thank you. For the primary school, the students enjoyed a special someone dance last weekend. For Turkey Hill Elementary School, next week is kindness week, boosting student morale and creating a safe environment. For Lunenburg Middle School, there are 90 students registered for the DC trip. And the LMS Project 51 ambassadors attended the launch day in Boston. They were incredible in representing Lunenburg's youth. For Lunenburg High School, students are worried about potential teacher cuts as seven teachers as 35 sections of classes, classes larger, less choices for students. Thank you.
Thank you, Tatum. Okay, we have review and approve minutes for the regular session, January 3rd, January 17th, and December 20th. On the agenda, it says 24, but that would be 23. Did everybody have a chance to look at those?
Motion to approve minutes?
So.
Sorry.
Yep, any questions?
I would just make a comment that Anthony, and I think that's what he was going to say, was absent on the 12/20th, so we could just do those separately.
Okay. Which ones were you at?
12/20, he was absent.
Okay, so motion to approve the minutes of January 3rd, 2024, and January 17th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes of December 20th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I love State.
All right, so that's all taken care of. We, I have approved warrants totaling $87,144.85 between January 23rd and January 29th. Were there any questions with any of that? Okay, Superintendent?
Good evening, everyone, and let me just start by thanking all of the students who came here to speak on behalf of the programs that are so meaningful to you. I really do appreciate that. They're demonstrating part of our mission statement, that they become active citizens. So, thank you very much for that. We really do appreciate it. Just a reminder, kindergarten registration is open. The reminder again that the preschool, pre-K registration will open on March 1st. Our extended day summer program will, registration will open on Monday, April 22nd. And that program will run the weeks of July 8th, July 15th, July 22nd, and July 29th. Our extended day before and after school for school year 2024-2025 will open Wednesday, May 1st. And our Early Learning Center registration will open Monday, May 20th. Just want to remind the committee that we did participate in the NAEP testing that last week of January. So, stay tuned. When we get some results, we'll be sharing those. And February reminders, our next scheduled meeting of the school committee is on February 28th. It is a meeting that will be hybrid from the middle high school at 6:30. Please note that it is not the typical first and third Wednesday of the month because the third Wednesday falls during school vacation week. And February 19th is a holiday, so the schools and the offices will be closed in observation of President's Day, and that entire week is also school vacation.
Sounds good, y'all. Be ready for school vacation.
When are we meeting with our state rep? We have the joint meeting with the state rep.
The joint meeting with the state rep is on February 20th. And that will be here on February 20th, and anyone is welcome to attend. It is part of the Select Board meeting. But what happened the last time, and what I anticipate will happen this time, is that the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee all meet, and we are able to ask them some questions. I knew there were extra questions this time, so I've been running around asking them there. But you are most welcome to attend.
Do we have to worry about open meeting if more than three of us?
We call a meeting.
Oh, just call, okay, perfect, got it.
It's a joint meeting. I'll call a meeting.
Got it.
Oh, that's during February vacation.
It's during February vacation, which is difficult because people are not around.
Okay.
It is when the.
Select Board arranged that date.
The Select Board arranged that date, but when I spoke with Representative Kishmerick, he said, "Nothing goes on in the State House that week because it's February vacation," so they were open. So, that's how they're all available. So, that's what I was told. So, tough week. Okay, we do have several business things that I don't think are going to take a great deal of time. We're going to run through them quickly. FY25 School Choice.
So, as a reminder, last meeting I had made a recommendation for your consideration that we adhere to the patterns of the past few years and participate in the school choice program, but limit that participation to opening new seats in the ninth grade. And that is because we are watching our class sizes at the lower grades carefully. And we're always within a couple of students of hitting a 25 per class. So, we try to be careful because we need to leave a little bit of a buffer for any students who move into Lunenburg during the school year. So, the recommendation was for five choice seats in grade nine. There's one open choice seat in this year's grade nine. So, we could move to keep that one seat open for 10th grade. So, we could have an applicant in the 10th grade. And then we also make a recommendation that the committee consider taking a vote to allow any students who should move out of district during their high school years. I think in the memo from the last time I said grades 11 and 12, but it would be 10, 11, and 12.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve participation in school choice with nine, sorry, five seats for grade nine? And then carrying forward the one unfilled school choice seat?
So moved.
Okay, we can vote on that and then do the other part. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we need to vote on allowing Lunenburg High School students in grades 10, 11, and 12 to remain through graduation if they should move out of Lunenburg.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, the school calendar.
So, we also brought this forward and allowed some additional time for public input review. We have not received anything to our lps@lunenburgschools.net. And as I had indicated prior, typically when we bring the calendar forward, we have dates identified for our parent-teacher conferences. But each school, school advisory council is having conversation about piloting something different that they think might be more effective in their building for next year. So, where the model for what they would like to pilot has yet to be determined. They also haven't selected dates. There's been some conversation about, do we do a fall and a spring? So, the conversations are ongoing. So, if we are comfortable to move forward and approve this calendar, we will be back later in the spring with information relative to how each school wants to move forward and pilot parent-teacher conferences next year, and dates at that time. So, we would amend the calendar and add those dates to the calendar at that time.
My only thought on this is, did anybody check to see if the nature's classroom, I know it's tentative, is that devoid of religious holidays?
Where it is tentative, we would probably work around availability like we did when we had that. like we did when we had that conflict, yep.
Okay.
What did it conflict with last year?
There, there was a conflict with nature's classroom.
With the holiday.
Jewish high holidays.
Okay, I'm glad that we're paying attention to that.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY25 school calendar as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. And the preschool tuition.
So annually, we, we've come forward, um, with a recommended increase to the preschool tuition. I think it was since FY19, um, we have been bringing forward a 4% increase to the tuition rate. I just need to pull it up and tell you exactly what it is. So the current, uh, tuition for, uh, two days a week is one thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars and fourteen cents. If you approve a 4% increase, that would go to one thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and eleven cents. The current four-day tuition is three thousand four hundred twelve dollars and ten cents. A 4% uh, increase for next year would have that tuition at three thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Any questions?
No.
Alright, then do I have a motion to approve the tuition increase?
I'll make a motion to approve the tuition increase as described.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. A donation?
Uh, we had a request come forward, um, from our CAF workers.
Oh, that's the wrong donation, yeah?
Oh.
The donation.
The, the check donation.
The check donation.
Yes.
The quick one.
Um, the, the PTO sponsored the Fall Scholastic Book Fair, and from that, um, we have a check in the amount of two thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. That would be going to the primary school in the student activity account to support future field trips.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation with gratitude.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now the donation of days.
Now the donation of days. Our CAF workers came forward, um, and they wish to donate, um, a total of two hundred and nineteen, um, and a half hours to one of their colleagues in that, uh, employee group, uh, who is, uh, in need of, uh, some, some support, uh, through a medical situation.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation of days.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we thank them for doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we need to appoint a paraprofessional representative for negotiations. I don't know.
When is it?
Well, they wish to open negotiations sometime soon, um, and these would be-
After school.
After-school times, yeah. So, I don't know if, um, if anybody has those kinds of times available. I don't know if Mr. Beardmore might be interested where he did the others.
I am not available.
I know you're not available, I know.
I could be available, but I'm not sure I'm ready.
You are not alone, so. It's the first time for everything.
This is true.
If you're available and you wanna do it.
If you think you are available.
What's the time?
They generally meet, um, in the afternoon because they, they don't work until school dismissal time, um, after the lunches and the cleanup of the kitchen, so it's usually in the afternoon.
Paraprofessional.
Oh, the paraprofessional, sorry. Yeah. I'm sorry, I've been very, very deeply immersed in a bunch of, um,
Spreadsheets.
Spreadsheets with numbers. Typically even, um, our CAF workers and our custodians, they generally speaking, meet in the after-school hours, immediately after dismissal. So usually like 3:30, um, because the lower schools dismiss.
Like, how many, um, how many weeks does this take? I'm trying to figure out.
It takes as long as it takes.
As long as it takes, um, if you would like.
I wonder if we could appoint two, two members, too? That might be a good idea, too, that way it's-
If you, if you-
I'll be a second if someone-
You learn a ton.
Yeah, I want, I want to learn the process, um, just, it's my first year.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you will do it, then I will step in if Mr. Beardmore does not wish to.
Okay.
Okay?
That's terrifying, but yeah.
I will talk to Mr. Beardmore.
Okay.
And see if he is willing because the other negotiating team is quite time-consuming. So, um, yes.
Can I ask how time-sensitive is this? Is this possible that we could say table this for the next meeting?
We can.
I'm, I'm okay with just, if Peter doesn't wanna do it, I'll, we can discuss the next meeting.
So we'll table it until next meeting?
Or, or we could have Laura and two alternates.
Yeah, and two alternates, and then, and then we can either, either I or Mr. Beardmore.
That's all.
Either, uh, well, I'll talk to Mr. Beardmore, and either he or I will be the other person.
Okay.
Okay? Alright.
I don't know that I can.
We'll do it that way.
I'm nervous, the pairs are very-
Oh, don't be nervous, it'll be fine. Okay. It is very important, I agree. Um, what I would like to do is I'd like to skip over the Chapter 76 school approval for now. I do wanna get to that tonight, but I think it may take a little bit of conversation, and, um, I think the ACE program piece is quite quick, and then we can get to the budget update faster. Would that be alright with people?
Yep. Do we need to?
Alright, we're gonna be casual, we're just gonna jump. Okay, so the ACE program?
Yes, so I'm going to invite our-
How do we pronounce this?
Director of Special Services to come, uh, to the microphone to talk about this program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, um, I asked Amanda Duggan, um, she's our ACE program teacher, to do a little PowerPoint. I know that that was dropped into your, um, folder for tonight. So the MACI program, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, it's a program that started, um, the conception was back around 2007, and then in 2022, it really got, um, some more traction. And it was, it mandated colleges and universities to run programs to welcome students with intellectual disabilities and autism onto their campuses for meaningful, um, collaboration between all involved. And so, we were lucky enough with this. Um, Fitchburg State adopted the MACI program in 2023, and then they reached out to us through, and I, I can't stress this enough, our teacher, Amanda, is amazing with our 18 to 22-year-old program, and she has developed relationships with all of the surrounding communities that have 18 to 22-year-old programs, including Fitchburg State. And I think directly because of that is how Fitchburg State reached out. Only three schools in the area were invited to have students come and be a part of the MACI program moving forward, and we were one of them. So we now have the opportunity to be a part of MACI at no cost. Not all universities, um, have this grant available. A lot of schools have to pay for it, the public schools have to pay for the students to be a part of that. We will not have to absorb any costs at this time because of the grant through Fitchburg State. So our students are able to take advantage of this. And basically, um, I'm not gonna read the slides for you, you've got that in your, in your, in your folder. I think that the nicest thing is, gonna be this little snippet right here, which talks about the day and what that would look like. So, the students would come to Lunenburg to start. They might be in the ACE program on a Monday. Tuesday, they might go to Fitchburg State and take a course, um, followed by going to the dining room, going to the library, the recreation center. Wednesday, they might be back at ACE, and then Thursday, they might be back at Fitchburg State on college campus. So, so you've got students that are part of our community, but also getting to go to university and being a part of that. And they also can join clubs at their, at their leisure, too. We do have to provide a, a paraprofessional to go with them, a job coach, um, but we've done that in the past when we've, because in our, in our program right now, we've also, before MACI even came to us, we were supporting students that were going to Mount Wachusett Community College. So, we've been doing this kind of in a, in its own little, um, Lunenburg way already, and so we've supported students, so that's not new to us. So we've got the ability to be able to support students in, in the, at Fitchburg State for this. So it's just, it's a really feel-good opportunity that we've got, and I think we should be very proud of the fact, um, that our 18 to 22-year-old program has, has grown to what it is now, to where they're actually reaching out to us with these opportunities and, and letting our students be a part of it.
And they get college credit.
Um, I, I think for the most part, they're audited. The courses are audited.
Who provides the transportation?
We would provide the transportation, but we have that ability anyways. Most of our students that are part of the 18 to 22 do get out a lot, um, throughout the week, so we have that. And like I said, it's because of Amanda and how she's grown the program and how we already have things in place, so it's not an additional ask for any budgetary needs for next year. It's just gonna be an additional place that some of our students can go.
That's absolutely wonderful.
It is.
That's, that's a great program, and it's a nice ray of sunshine to all this other discussion.
It most certainly is, it most certainly is.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So, we thank you very much. Do we have to formally approve? No, it's a discussion. So, we thank you very much for bringing that to us. That's terrific, and thank Amanda as well.
I will.
Okay, um, so what I'd like to do then is go to the budget update, and then we'll go back to the Chapter 76 school.
For some reason, the screen share has been disabled. So I would just call everybody's attention back to the slide deck from the January 24th meeting.
Okay.
I needed to submit, um, a budget to the town manager, um, so that she can incorporate that into her budget presentation for the select board. So, of all the cuts that we discussed on the 17th and then on the 24th, um, most of them, uh, went into the budget. The things that are not in the budget that was submitted, and it did hit a 2.5% target. And our, um, health insurance rate has been locked in now at 5.7%, um, which is good news, but I mean, it's essentially about twenty-seven thousand dollars, uh, from the 6.6. So the things that are not in the budget that hits a 2.2. We did not cut any of the librarian position that we had indicated was possible. We had suggested that we might be potentially able to restore a guidance position at the middle school. That did not happen. Uh, we did not include the world language teacher. Uh, we, we had recommended taking that off the table for consideration. The technology teacher position, we had posed as a possible, we took that off the table. That is not in that 2.5 budget. The possibility of reducing the nurse FTEs at the middle high school, um, again, not in the 2.5 budget that I submitted. The athletic director and the athletic trainer positions were not in the budget that I submitted for that 2.5.
Wait, the cuts were not?
The cuts were not, or the positions were not?
They, they were not cuts in the budget.
Got it.
Okay, so those positions remain.
Intact.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear.
The other things that were on the, um, the slide deck for the last, uh, couple of meetings, we had talked about the possibility of paraprofessional reductions. We, we didn't do any of that. The BCBA position is not included as a cut, um, for that 2.5. Nor is the Director of Finance and HR position. What is included in the budget that hits a 2.5% target are all the other positions. Classroom teachers at the high school, there were a total of five. The music teacher reduction of a .4. The intervention teacher at the high school. The guidance cut of a .5 at the, uh, high school. The .5 cut to a full-time second shift custodian to making them a halftime. Uh, the assistant principal reduction at the middle high school. Another 1.5 guidance cut at the middle school. A classroom teacher at the middle school. Uh, the part-time secretary for the athletic department was cut. You may recall that I said that that position has been paid out of the revolving account. If we're not paying her salary out of the revolving account, those monies can be applied to the athletic trainer salary to be reduced what is being funded in the local budget. At Turkey Hill, the classroom teacher, the intervention teacher, the guidance, the halftime cut of the phys ed teacher, um, the elimination of the part-time nighttime custodian, the part-time secretary, it's not truly a .5. I know that there were questions around the, what is the clerical position? That is the clerical position. At primary school in Turkey Hill, they're, they're both cut, and, and that is a cut in the budget to get to 2.5. Essentially, they work about 10 hours a week. And pick up some overtime when things are, are busy and it's not overtime, it's just extra hours. So, um, that is in there. Reducing the music teacher position. Again, chorus would be maintained, instrument instruction not. I just wanna run through what-
Yeah, and then we'll ask when you're all done.
The Wilson reading teacher position, the special ed teacher position that would combine our TLC program and our achieve program at Turkey Hill. The classroom teacher position at the primary, the intervention teacher position at the primary, the social worker position, uh, which was the second social worker position at the primary. Again, the other half PE cut, the nighttime custodian, part-time, and the part-time secretary. And then at the district level, that instructional, the third instructional coach, we would still have two. Next year, they would both be funded under different grants. They all three have been funded under grants. One grant is expiring, so we will maintain two grant-funded coaches. Um, the secretary position at the central office, two maintenance staff positions, the nighttime custodian at TCP. And, uh, we would be looking to reduce, um, the current Title I Coordinator slash Literacy Specialist Coach. The Title I responsibilities will be withdrawn from, from that and be absorbed by our, um, Director of Teaching and Learning. So there are still an awful lot of cuts. That's what it takes to get to the 2.5. That said, um, the Finance Committee has reached out, um, and they have asked me to provide them a level service budget, so keeping everything that we have. They would like to have that for tomorrow evening.
You got homework.
Oh, I've been doing it. Like, that's why I am talking about CAF workers negotiating when they're not.
Have you seen what time she drops stuff on the drive?
Yes.
Midnight.
So I can tell you that I- Um, so I can tell you that I-
So, you got, you got to two and a half percent, that's-
Yep. But it, it required all of those cuts. So, I can tell you that I've been working to develop the budget that is level service. And Mr. Cassidy, on November fifteenth, his last day before the school committee, before he left the district, he advised you at that point that, um, what we had factored in, keeping everything with a ten percent increase to health insurance was somewhere in the ballpark of, uh, a nine point eight-six percent increase, I think. However, our Lunenburg staff family has grown significantly this year. We have had many staff adding to their families and changing their health insurance enrollment. So, the health insurance is, you know, actually ticked up a bit. So, looking at a level service budget, and again, I reserve the right to go back and critique these lines. It may fluctuate slightly, but we're in the ballpark of a ten and a half.
Oh, my-
To keep everything that we have and cover the increases to transportation, added district placement.
Do you have that total number? What's-
The gap?
No, no, the number that the budget would be for level services.
Uh, twenty-five million, three hundred seven thousand and two hundred fifty-three. So, you know, basically, it's a twenty-five point three million.
That's, I mean, the town-
So, needless to say, um-
There was one more ask that I-
There's one more. Keep going.
The town manager also asked me if I could provide her a budget that had just the ESAR So, if we look at just the ESAR cuts, that budget increase would be seven point eight-six. So, at this point, I have shared with all of you what we're recommending to hit the two point five target. I can tell you now that if, if we're looking to keep all the positions except the, essentially, it's whatever money is funding ESAR positions. It doesn't necessarily mean that the person who is being paid this year out of ESAR, because some of them are senior staff, um, they're not going anywhere. But, the money is gone. So, reducing the money from the salaries and reducing folks, if they were also health insurance, which most of them were not, just cutting the ESAR positions is that seven point eight-six increase. So, you have a two and a half. You know what the ESAR positions are, 'cause we've had that included in our presentations prior. So, you know what that would look like if we went that route? Obviously, level service is exactly what we have right now. So, what I am working on now, and will have for you on February twenty-eighth, is another Yes, I've been developing a lot of different budgets. I think I'm gonna apply for my finance license from DESI. I will be working on a budget that I would recommend for your consideration that restores some of the cuts from the two point five budget. I have been having conversations with, um, the central office, uh, leaders connected to some of these cuts in the two and a half. So, our custodial cuts, our maintenance cuts, I've been having conversations with Mr. Heavy about what he would prioritize to be restored, um, if, if we can produce a, a budget in excess of two and a half. I've had the same conversations with our Director of Teaching and Learning, our Director of, uh, Special Services, and, um, each of our principals. And they've looked at the list, and they've indicated to, to me what they would prioritize to be restored. So, I will be taking all of that feedback, um, and thinking about the, the operational Because just like the position and the person in the position, if they've been here, they have bumping rights, so it's not that salary that goes, and it, it's a little bit complicated. It's also complicated because we have a strategy and a plan for how we're gonna operate if we have to hit the two and a half. So, restoring some positions, now we need to also rethink some of the plan. So, that is still in process. But, I will have something that I can present to you that recommends restoring some positions, which would take us above the two and a half percent target.
So, I guess that the major thing that I, I want to say, particularly for my friends out here, is that this is not over.
No.
This is not over, and we hear your voice. So, don't panic yet. Um, we, we have a lot of work to do. If it has to be two and a half, then, you know, that, that's, that's what we had outlined, but we are not bound to deliver a two and a half percent budget. But, we cannot go with a ten percent budget. Clearly, that would be irresponsible. So, so, we're not finished, and, um, I guess that's the, the other point I wanna make is stipended positions, 'cause to, to go back to what Tatum had said earlier about, about mock trial and those kinds of things.
They're not going anywhere.
They're not going anywhere. Things that are stipended.
The, the, those clubs and other activities have advisors, and those advisors are paid their stipend out of the student activity revolving account. They are not paid their stipend out of the budget, so they are not being cut from the budget.
I, I think it's important that, um, particularly our high school students understand that, that, um, things like that are not being cut.
So-
Um, Mr. Skolbrini?
In light of the amount of participation and commentary from supporters of the edu, uh, the music education program, is it possible that in your, like, I'll just call it, like, Dr. Burnham's recommended budget, that some of the two cuts to the music program would not be included? And the reason I ask is because neither of them are, uh, uh, an FTE, they're both, like, point fives, is that right? Like, I was writing the data-
It's partial FTE cuts.
Yeah, one's a point four.
One's a point four.
And a point two.
Okay. So, like, it, I mean, this is somebody who's not running a budget at the whim of every public official in the town of Lunenburg, so I understand that you've, you've done a lot, and this is not, is it possible that those two particular cuts could be restored, given that they're both, neither are full-time positions? And I just can't see how much money we would be saving in a program that, it, it seems like that cut would be disproportionate for the size of the music program. And if there's only three, I don't know how many there are, but if there's only three people and we're cutting the equivalent of, like, uh, point nine FTE, that's, that's a pretty big cut, especially 'cause-
So, there are other things for us to consider in that regard. Currently, um, and maybe Mrs. Scott will want to address this as well. Currently, at Turkey Hill, those students who are in band and chorus are taking band and chorus during intervention time. They are not getting intervention time if they need intervention time, which is why we've been looking at the possibility of perhaps stipending the current music teacher to potentially provide some instrument lessons before school, because the schedule for the, um, the Unified Arts rotation at Turkey Hill is the morning. That's why we're not contemplating it after school. He'd have to wait around for that. Additionally, if after-school were a better option for families, we already have the after-school program, uh, music program, where students can, um, have instrument lessons. It's, it, they pay a fee for it, um, but they can learn any number of instruments through a program that we already have after-school. And it's housed often, well, it, it depends. But, if those lessons are happening at the middle high school, the kiddos from Turkey Hill can just walk up the, the back walkway to the building as well. So, transportation isn't as big a challenge in that regard, whereas if we do the morning, um, parents would have to be able to get their, their children to drop off at the, at the school. If you, if the committee feels that that's something you wanna keep, and it's something that you wanna keep during the school day, then the school is gonna have to reconfigure their schedule, which is not an easy feat when you share as many staff as they do with the primary school, because that means you also potentially are reconfiguring the primary school.
What, what about taking, um, the teacher that is there, his day, and starting his day earlier?
That's exactly what we're gonna do. Some of it will be before school.
Right, right. It would have to be before school. That's been done in that program before. I would don't. Um, that, where the lessons are taught, or, or the band is before school.
So, you would wanna keep him salaried?
You could keep him salaried and start his day staggered. They do that in Lancaster with the beginning band as well.
I would, I would want to have a conversation with the LEA-
Oh, yeah.
About that?
Oh, yeah. But there are, I guess my point is, there are ways around this that we need to work on.
So, there's broad consensus here across the committee to maintain that position in a recommended-
If, in a recommended budget, to maintain the service somehow, I don't think it has to be salaried, though I think that would be better for everybody, but even if it was stipended before school. I don't know. Brian, what do you think?
My thought is try to get creative in, in the possibilities of trying to keep the opportunities for those students.
Which we have been.
Doesn't have to be a certain way, but I think having those opportunities for those students, we've talked about it. I think when we, we heard from the students even today, it's, it's sports, it's music, it's art, it's everything. They, they need whatever it is that they're interested, it doesn't have to be just sports or just music, but those opportunities need to be done.
I think that, two things. First, I think that music education is different than other kinds of education, in that it includes an element of performance, and it is like a direct interaction with art in a way that you can only do in, like, you know, visual art, but you don't get the performance aspect. So, I do think it, it is unique in the curriculum, and for that reason, I think that we should keep it. And I also think that because the department is so small, the cut seems bigger than it would be elsewhere. And I think that restoring the athletic director and the athletic trainer were important for the folks that do athletics, and I think that we should consider a similar approach for the kids that want to do music and band. And if it means that we deliver a budget to the town manager over the two point five percent, but we keep those things, I, I would do that every day. If, if I had to, like, tattoo it on my forearm and walk it into her office, that is definitely worth doing. I just, I can't see, I mean, every single time we've asked for a public comment, not just the parents, but the kids come. If it's that important to them, it should be that important to the town.
Okay.
I also think Turkey Hill took a lot of the brunt of the cuts.
Turkey Hill had a lot of positions that the other schools don't have.
And they've got the bubble class leaving, but, um, and the Wilson reading teacher.
Yeah, and that, there is not one at the primary, so-
Yeah.
But, it just seems that music education, starting in fifth grade, makes a big difference compared to starting in sixth grade. Oh, Brian Scott.
Yes.
So, different component, I, definitely a lot of concerns across the board, but I think one that stood out for me that I mentioned to the superintendent this week was, uh, the custodians and maintenance. I, I have concerns about those cuts, that I feel like already were, were understaffed, that the buildings aren't always, uh, getting the, the needs that they, uh, that they need, getting those needs, uh, filled. And also, I had concerns about contractual obligations, that we can't have, say, teachers' cleaning or assistant principals' cleaning, that we could be in conflict and, and violation of a, a contract with the union, too. So, I, I definitely have concerns about the, the maintenance and custodial cuts as well.
I will say that Mr. Heavy has looked into, um, recommended staffing levels based on square footage for, like, the minimum level of cleaning. Our current staffing level at Turkey Hill and primary is where it belongs, and we are currently understaffed for the middle high school.
Yeah.
So, my recommendation, uh, as the needs budget, the over the two point five budget, I really would like to see the custodians and maintenance filled to the needs of the school buildings.
So, restoring all of the custodians and-
And I think that should also be stated to the Select Board, that those needs are very important, 'cause I know the Select Board really cares about the buildings in the town.
That's a lot of positions.
We're losing half the maintenance staff under this budget, right? We've got four.
Four.
And this is cutting two positions.
Correct.
And we're-
One of them is currently not filled. Cutting the second would leave us with two individuals. If we had a situation where one of them had to be out for medical for an extended period of time, and if that were to fall during the winter months, during snow removal operations, we would have one person and Mr. Heavy.
Ooh.
Until I buy my own pickup truck with a plow and come out here and help.
Yeah, it's-
Which is, I, I may have to do it, I'm just saying.
It's just cutting, that, that's a lot of maintenance cuts, and, I mean, especially with the age of Turkey Hill and the amount of maintenance that, and-
Oh, oh, it's not just Turkey Hill.
Yeah.
We have a lot of challenges and repairs to mechanicals in all three buildings.
We're also doing-
Mr. Heavy comes and sits with me pretty much every afternoon and tells me what quotes he has now.
Are we doing maintenance on Passio? Are we doing maintenance on Passios as well?
No.
Okay.
Custodian though.
We have a custodian there.
We have the custodian. Brian?
I also wanted to add too, that the finance committee will likely be bringing up the idea of the GPW working with the schools in maintenance.
I have very, um, strong thoughts on that, um, as does Mr. Hevy. So we can have that conversation another time.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're prepared as a school to have those conversations when the finance asks.
Yep.
Um, I also wanted to advocate for the guidance cut at THGS. I know at the, um, school advisory committee, um, we talked about the impact of the guidance cuts. And I know it's a full-time cut. And even if we could do like a halftime and share with the primary or a social worker with the primary, so going from two cuts to, from two FTEs to like 1.5 or, uh, two to one and put 0.5 in each school. Cause I am worried about mental health and behavioral issues and starting them before they become issues, especially at those ages. But. Honest.
What would be the total number of guidance counselors in primary in Turkey Hill? Based off of?
There would be no guidance counselors based on these cuts, but they each would have a social worker.
Okay.
Which restores them to the staffing level in behavioral health that they had pre-COVID.
Yeah.
Except they would have a license that has clinical.
Clinical.
But this, these aren't pre-COVID kids. These are the kids that didn't get that.
They are, but I can tell you that pre-COVID, we had a need. And if you go back and look at our five-year staffing plans, we planned to add social workers to the district because pre-COVID, we had one. And she only supported the high school.
I also wanted to say thank you for getting it to 2.5%. I know that was very difficult. I'm really impressed you managed to keep the athletic director, the athletic trainer and, uh, the BCB and the director of finance and HR and, um, thank you. I know this was a lot of work. I, I don't know how you did it. Like I'm looking at this and I honestly, I, I don't know how you did this, but thank you. Um, I'm really hoping that we get above 2.5%. We don't have to do this, but this was a lot of work and a lot of painful choices, especially considering the growth we've made in the past five years and the systems you've put in place, so thank you for all this hard work.
Well, I, I thank you for that, but that, um, is also extended, I think, to, um, the leadership team.
Yeah.
I know that some people probably think that I sit in my office and just. I don't. There's consultation and there has been consultation for months with the principals about what cuts can we survive and still support and move forward as best we can. Same is true with our different departments. Two and a half is pretty, pretty devastating. And quite frankly, if we're going to keep, um, at least three maintenance, uh, all of the custodians, the music. We've started working on the recommended budget, but, um, you're talking about somewhere in the ballpark of a 6% increase.
Yeah.
That's a long way away from two and a half. I honestly don't.
You have to look, look at the numbers, figure out what, you know, what might be reasonable and what goes in if we get a little more.
Right.
I don't necessarily think we can afford to put all the custodians back in personally. I don't know that we can put both music positions back. I, I definitely want to see the grade five band put somehow. The other one doesn't have the numbers.
The other music cut was driven solely by numbers.
Enrollment.
When you consider the total number of students
Right.
enrolled in music classes, semester one plus semester two. It's a total of 29 students. For one full-time teacher. Like, that's, that's really low.
So I see that and that program can grow.
And, and.
As need develops, it would be restored. You would still have the band. You would still have the chorus. And, and an elective.
Yes.
And just to be perfectly clear, this, this budget maintains middle school sports?
Because the athletic director position is intact, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make it really clear.
The middle school sports was only going to go if we were reducing
The athletic.
The AD position, because the AD position became full-time and we expanded and started middle school sports because we had a full-time athletic director who could manage all of it. And it was something that the parents wanted to see.
Okay.
So that, that's why. Or we could have had conversations about what sports we're not going to run if we wanted to keep some middle school sports. But you can't have a part-time person running the program. We have in excess of 40% of our high school kids participating in sports. That's a lot to navigate and manage. There's only so much a part-time position can do. And this takes you back to public comment from your LEA president about doing more and doing the same with less. It's just not realistic. It's, it's just not.
I just wanted to make it clear that, yes.
So if that athletic director position stays as, it was not included as a cut
Okay.
in the two and a half. So right now, that position is intact and middle school athletics is also intact.
Hey, is there anything else from the committee? I thank you and I thank you ladies.
Yeah, thank you guys.
For the time and effort and, and pushing every little skill you could find, um, to, to make this work.
Both Mrs. Scott and Mrs. Hanscom have been extraordinarily helpful in trying to take on the role of the finance director and develop a few budgets.
So, um, all right. Well, if that's what we have for tonight, we'll continue on. Knowing that there's still more to be written.
Right.
Okay, um, next we have the chapter 76 school approval. And I, I jumped over this because I, I thought that it may take us a little bit to figure this out. In looking at the regulations as to what we can do, we do not have the authority to say, yes, a school should be here, no, a school should not be here. That is not within our authority. It appears that our authority, if I have read this all correctly, is we need to make sure that it meets the standards of, um, our schools. That, that the curriculum is strong and that the building is safe and, and all those things. And then there's an added layer because it is a 76, 766 school. In reading through all of this, it looked like we could do one of two things. One was for us to take on the role of knowing what we're talking about. And the other would be to, to ask. Like she doesn't have enough to do, Mrs. Hanscom, to take the lead in, in figuring this out. And see if it is, you know, i- if this school is appropriate to the regulations. Do you, do you want to jump in and talk about that a little bit?
So, I'm sure Vernon passed, um, forwarded the email along to me. I did a little bit of research. I came across the advisory that you had sent the link to.
Right.
I had also gone into the Mass General laws. It does appear that, um, what the recommendation is from the advisory is for the school committees to develop a policy or a set of procedures. So I did have Liz Peterson go into MASC and there is an updated policy from 2022 that I believe is in your folder, that has the, the policy, a, um, a recommended policy that, that they've used before.
Is that our policy or is it that?
No, it's, it's through MASC. Um, so it's, it's a policy that's through the school committee, right? The Massachusetts School Committee, um, to give you guys guidance on what a policy may look like. So it's not a real in-depth policy. It's got some nice checkpoints. I like the nice succinct, here's what you do, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And then it also has, it does say in the num, in the second part, it says a checklist for approval for private school. And then in the advisory, and this is also in your, in your, um, folders, it's a sample criteria, um, for school committees to use. So if you don't have a policy in place, you can use this and still meet the letter of the law, I believe, through, um, the Mass Gen, General Laws. And basically what, um, my understanding and what my recommendation would be is that it talks about, um, the school, the school that's requesting the approval, complete this sample criterion to give us information to show that they've met the, the basis for the compulsory education or the compulsory attendance and the curriculum and other aspects of it. And then from there, um, the superintendent or the designee would review this, those submitted materials and then make a presentation to, the school would make a presentation to the school committee. Superintendent makes a recommendation, um, and then you all would take formal action. So my recommendation would be for you all to probably what designate me, I can reach out to, um, the school and collect some and give this information for that person to collect.
That seems to be the most expeditious way to.
I think so. And, and I've got a good working relationship with him as well. And he's been very, he's been very receptive to anything we've asked him about this up to this point, so.
Uh, Brian?
Would it also make sense to send the, um, the, the drafted policy to the policy subcommittee? So they can start working on that?
Yes.
Yes, I would think so.
Oh, yeah. I would like us to adopt that as official policy.
Yeah.
Something like it.
Yeah, I think it's good to have something in place.
I think it's very interesting that the state of Massachusetts doesn't want the authority over private schools. And kind of foisted it onto local school committees. I think that's.
I think it's a check and balance.
Yeah.
We also have to go out and, and I have to go out and observe the out-of-district placements where we have our students placed. And I have to go through a checklist. They don't give me a checklist per se. I've created one with the help of other, um, directors. We've come up with some samples. And so I have to go out and, and observe these schools and check certain things off to make sure that, that we have those on record too. So it's, Desi has a check and balance system with that.
This strikes me as the state of Massachusetts dispensing liability to smaller, poorer institutions such as the Lunenburg School District. So I'm not in favor of that, but, uh, it's all about giving away your liability. I don't think it has anything other than that. It makes us do their work.
Somewhere in, in everything I have read, it said something like, we're not liable. Someplace, someplace in here, it's, no, not them, us.
Oh, good. That's good.
That we would not be liable
Good, good, good.
for what goes on in, I, I think I read that. I read all kinds of things.
And they talk about acting in good faith.
Right, right.
Acting in good faith.
So, but your, your libel I is much better than mine, so. Okay, so then.
Do we need to vote?
It's down as discussion. I don't think we need to vote.
I think we should vote.
I don't think you need to authorize. I can
I think you can.
Have her as the designee to go.
I think that makes sense because.
Do what she knows what to do and we can go to the, we can go through the, um, policy piece. Because that is ours.
What's the timeline on this?
Um, I know that the request said that they wanted to get the school going as fast as possible.
And unfortunately, we've been tied up with other things.
Okay, well, I know they're a good timeline, but what's the state require for timeline?
I don't know what the state requirement is for timeline. I can tell you that they generally don't act very quickly, but.
Okay, because, yeah, right now, our focus is.
This is why it took so long and he was quite understanding about why it was taking us so long. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Together.
Appreciate it. All right. We've made it through that far. Now we need reports. Does anyone have reports?
I do.
Mr. Scollbrini, what do you have to report about?
All right, so, uh, PTO met on Monday. Uh, they reviewed the, um, funds raised from Special Someone. If you are an investor or you want to take a bet, you should bet on the PTO because they did more than double the business from last year. They raised almost, or they raised more than $10,000. It was in part because, yeah, the Special Someone dance raised a ton.
Damn guys.
It was crazy. So last year they raised about 4,000. This year they raised more than 10,000. In part, it was because they had, they sought out sponsors and the sponsors were really generous. Um, the other thing that happened was they did a better job, a more precise job of knowing what to order and what not to order and how to spend their, their dollars. And, uh, they got these like accordion light-up things.
Oh, yeah.
And they sold five, what, what did, what did she say? Like 500 of them?
Went through an awful lot.
It was crazy. I, I have two in my house. I know I have no idea where they came from until the PTO meeting. Um, they are also planning on doing some stuff in, during the rest of the school year, uh, for teachers. And then the last thing is they're contemplating eliminating the Hollis Hills event because it is a very time-consuming process that doesn't make a lot of money. And they are contemplating doing a joint event with, is it the Lions Club? Mandy's mom? Henry Gilman's mom. Henry Gilman's grandma is affiliated with the Lions Club. And, uh, they were talking about doing a car show. And, uh, hopefully it would be like right outside TC Passios and then block it off from basically right where we are all the way down. And then they would have like a beer garden and grill and then lots of cars, so.
Oh, sounds like fun.
Yeah, and it would be in May, but that, that has not been made into an official plan. It's just something that's in, under discussion, so.
Terrific. Thank you.
Okay. I got three because it's been a while since we've done reports.
It's been a while, so we.
Um, uh, Turkey Hill Advisory Committee met in early January. After school activities had begun, uh, they were filled within a day. So what Principal Squire did was added another 60 slots. Her and Vice Principal Palumbo put up, um, an extra two, uh, activities that they're running. And, um, so everyone who wanted an after-school activity got accommodated and, um, the kids are having fun. They added Fun Fitness and Arts and Crafts and Board Games, and I can report that Fun Fitness is a hit, at least. And at least in early January, they are looking for donations of board games in good condition. Turkey Hill Elementary School is, um, and Boggle was especially mentioned. So if someone wants to get a copy of Boggle for Turkey Hill Elementary School, they would love that. We talked about how the back area wasn't plowed, but I'm sure it's been plowed now. Students need to come in in appropriate snowwear as winter has begun. The school is looking for donations of boots. Possible cuts at the January 17th meeting. We talked about the parent-teacher conferences and what quarter they were going to be in and whether or not it made sense to have report cards before the conferences so parents could go into parent-teacher. could go into parent-teacher conferences with report cards, and the teachers would have a better handle on, a better idea on what the students were like, because sometimes we do parent-teacher conferences early and the students' personalities haven't really come out, or the places where they might, uh, be struggling haven't really become apparent. Um, so they're talking about that. And the teachers had talked about maybe an early release on evening conference days because there's been, it's hard on the evening conferences. It's just conference after conference. And we talked about the calendar, um, and the iReady reports. In January, we had the PACSEL meeting. We talked about the 688 referral process and students graduating to adult services, and Desi is now requiring all students with an autism diagnosis, specifically an autism diagnosis are going to be required to have a 688 submitted. So parents are aware of the offered adult services. It doesn't mean they have to partake of them, um, but Desi's requiring that for autism. But I think anyone can request one. Um, it's just the autism one's going to be required that it be submitted. Uh, we also talked about the new IEP form. Uh, it's not live for us yet. It should be rolled out the next school year, hoping for Fall '24. Um, there's an IEP team of, uh, staff members who are going to be training staff, teachers, and parents. So hopefully we'll have some training for the parents too about how the new IEP is going to go. And again, it's going to be a lot longer and a lot more in-depth, uh, going from about 13 pages to like 39 pages. But it has a lot more parental and student involvement, and hopefully it just goes a lot more in-depth as to the needs of the student. And we're hoping to have a March meeting potentially highlighting the new IEP process so parents can get ready for that. And next meeting, we're going to be updating bylaws. Okay. Sorry. And then yesterday, we had the, uh, the, um, THES committee meeting. Winter after-school activities are going well, and the thing that they wanted me to bring to you guys is there's a drainage issue around the playground, um, from the water coming off of the turf field, because we, we know that there's been an issue with the turf field, but it's affecting the primary school playground, and we need a trench built at the base of the hill. I know Mr. Hevy just started, and it's been winter, so we can't deal with it yet, but, um, we should get a handle on that before it damages the yard. So it makes that area icy and dangerous, so the kids aren't allowed over there. They had to post, they had to put a halt to sledding because of, it was just sheer ice. And then when it's not ice, it's basically a mud pit, and some of the third graders, it's up to their knees. So, um, for the first time, they actually had to put out a call for PAMPS because kids are falling in the mud pit or accidentally stepping into the mud pit. Um, and it's really squishy and wet, um, and it's, it's becoming an issue, and it's no fun doing school when you're covered in mud. So that's something we need to be aware of and handling. So hopefully in the spring, we can figure out a trench or some way to handle the drainage issues, because it's going to be a while before we can actually fix it.
So the drainage is going to be all part and parcel of that, um, the study around that turf field?
Right, right.
Because that's what needs, apparently, to be fixed.
But we're hoping that we can do something...
We have to think about something that's going to not create a new safety issue. So we'll, we'll take a look at it, but see what can be done.
But the playground is okay. The playground's elevated, and they can, there's a ramp so they can get to the playground. The playground is not muddy itself. It's just when they venture off Playground Island into the swamp. Um, and I think that's about it. We talked about the cuts a little, but we talked about that tonight, so.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
The primary school met on January 22nd. They had finished their DIBL and iReady assessments, and they were making adjustments with student support teams. The iReady, uh, was sent home on the 30th, and they were doing a Zoom for the parents. Uh, they were switching to standards-based, a more standards-based report card. Um, and then the, each first Friday in March, or each first, first Friday in March, they were going to have the Hank Helper's Awards. Uh, they were coming up on their 100th day. They already had their 100th day celebration. Um, we also reviewed pieces of the handbook. We didn't review the whole handbook. Um, they were also going to be piloting conference changes. And we talked about building safety and security. Uh, there was also two finance committee meetings, one we already talked about where it was, uh, based on the school budgeting. I did post the, um, the YouTube on our Facebook page as well.
Oh, thank you.
So people can see that as well. Um, on January 18th, um, there was some updates from the town manager, uh, went out for bid on a generator project, and it was going to be, that generator project was going to be 16 to 18 weeks from that date. Uh, the public safety project was moving forward, um, trying to finish that in March. The governor was announcing money, uh, for the September storm, and they were waiting on the FEMA allocation. The track, the tract expenses for Lunenburg were over a hundred, $100,000.
Wow.
Uh, they hired the town accountant February 5th to start. Uh, Karen's going to stay on to mentor. Um, they did a capital planning overview about the 10 projects. Uh, number one was the public safety radio system for $315,000. Number two was the town-wide keying alarm system, which doesn't include the schools, for $185,000. It is expandable. The three was the Northfield culvert construction for $200,000. Four was the Turkey Hill, $275,000 study for renovations, um, ADA schematic design. Um, number five was the K-9 Cruiser, $92,000. Number six was the library security camera for $36,000. Seven was the marked traffic cruiser replacement for $73,000. Eight was the safety film for $33,000 for Turkey Hill. Nine was the security camera upgrades in the town buildings for $36,000. And 10 was the Wallace Park courts for $70,000. They did some reorganization. Uh, school was going to be, they were going to split it, because it's a lot for, uh, for them, so they're going to split it with Evan and Tiffany, um, splitting that. And, yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Very quickly, I will say that the middle school school advisory met on the 23rd of January. I could not attend, but I do have the minutes. Um, there was a lot of discussion about the budget, obviously, and the impacts, um, also about the NAEP testing, um, that has already gone by, and also about the school calendar. And there's a reminder to look at the handbook, and that's what I got from them. The master planning committee met last Thursday to talk about shaping the surveys they have gotten into sort of like this esoteric, and I don't mean that to be difficult, um, vision of what we want our community to be. We had to talk about picking adjectives like connected or healthy or resilient, or there was a whole bunch. So they, they took the people that were there, and, and we went through all of that, and they're going to present the next piece moving forward in the next couple of months. So that's what I have there. So, uh, it is time for a public comment yet again. If anybody would like to make a public comment yet again, you are welcome to do so.
Hello, once again, I'm Cara Horncowitz, 165 Gilchrist Street. Um, I would like to thank, or start with thanking Mr. Skolbrini for bringing up literally over half of the points that I had written down.
I cheated. I just said what you said.
Um, but I know there were proposed alternatives to the AD cut, and I just wanted to mention that as far as middle school sports go, that's a very same program with getting into high school sports as that fifth-grade band program is, right? You're thinking about cutting the equivalent in music, and when you think about it, I don't really see what the big difference is if both are communities with kids that are passionate about them. Um, they should be treated at least similarly. Um, bleh, I'm sorry. Um, I noticed that before, a couple of years ago, the position at the elementary school was already a .5, and that that .2 just recently got added, but even before that, there was still fifth-grade band and chorus. And so that was, I know this isn't questioning, but almost like a, why would there now not be, even though it's the same numbers? And like you were saying about the athletic director, there's only so much a part-time position can do, and that also applies to a high school music teacher. Um, the electives offered, there are so many kids who don't enjoy visual arts, but you need your arts credits. And so for those kids, they take music electives. They might not be interested in band or chorus, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're interested in painting or drawing or ceramics. Um, so, yeah, that's kind of my points there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Sophia Muley, 139 Cove Road. Um, I'd like to start by also thanking, uh, Mr. uh, Skolbrini. I really hope I pronounced that correctly. I'm so sorry, um, for, for speaking out about, um, about what we're concerned about. That means more than you could possibly think. Um, I want to comment on the fifth-grade band thing, and as much as I appreciate trying to be compensated for with maybe lessons before or after school, I've been doing music for such a long time to know that in no way at all is that the same equivalent to a band or a chorus, and that will not be the same experience. And you're missing that community part of it. You're missing the social part of it. Band and chorus is where you learn to work together to create something beautiful, to create art, to create together. And that's kind of the point. Um, that's the whole point. You can take music lessons and become perfect, um, at your instrument or voice, vocal artists. Um, and that's amazing. That's, that's actually incredible, uh, to me, but, um, but it's, it's not something to do alone. You know, I took private lessons for a long time. Actually, this is the first year I haven't been doing it, because I have a lot going on, but so many kids in the middle school and high school, when they stay after school for band, jazz band, marching band or something, they also have lessons after school. Um, it's highly encouraged. We're actually so fortunate that we have that program. Um, but they're, they're there for band. They would be there for band before they were there for lessons. Yeah, so that's what I have to say about that. Um, I have one thing to say about band and chorus in the high school, um, and that is that for the past couple of years, um, and this year, um, band and chorus in the high school particularly is one, one period. It's one block. So if you have, if you're taking chorus, you are taking it in, at the same time as you are taking band, and we have one teacher. So that means we have to split our time. You are essentially getting half of the instruction in a year that you would be getting for the course you signed up for. You are not getting full instruction, and it is still a class. Think about if you took math or science, but you had to take them in the same block. You would get half of a year's worth of math, half a week, and you would get the other half for science. You'd still be learning, but not nearly what you're supposed to be learning. Um, and that's kind of how it feels, to be honest. Um, yeah, and I look at my friends who are in chorus, who don't play an instrument, um, and they're so passionate about music, just as I am, and they're frus- they're frustrated. They're frustrated. I, you know, I see them every, every other day. They're sitting there in the chorus room while we're rehearsing band, and they're just sitting there, and, you know, they'll practice sometimes by themselves, because, you know, they're smart. They want to practice. You got to do that. But there's just that part that's missing, and it kind of sinks in your stomach, and it's like, why am I not, why, why, why am I only having this class half the time? And it's just because it's been combined, because it's been belittled. And the last thing I'll say, honestly, the last thing I'll say, is that the numbers are significantly lower in the music department, and the music electives drastically lower, absolutely lower. Um, but there's a reason for that, and the reason is there's, there's been cuts at the elementary and primary level in the past. Uh, we've had trouble getting kids to transition from there to the middle school level. There's just, it's time, really. It's a time block, really. That's the struggle. Um, and there's a stigma in our school. There's a huge stigma against music in our school, and I only know that because I've lived it. Um, and that's something social. You can't really get rid of that. But that's why I'm here talking about it, um, because practically, things can be done, even if people talk. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Damn.
That was pretty good.
I think she had a timer on her phone going. Oh, I think she had a timer on her phone going. She's good. She's going to run for office.
Uh, my name is Joseph James. I live at 756 Northfield Road, and I am talking on behalf of the music department as the, my two fellow peers have before me. And I think it is real, I understand that the budget cuts are really big and that they are just not a thing that can be easily avoided, but I do think that it is important to stress the imperance of a fifth-grade music program. We can already see that going from eighth grade to high school is a hu- we have a huge drop in the amount of people just because of the increase in stress in schooling. And going from sixth grade, trying to learn an instrument, you may think, oh, one year, they're one year older. It might not be that much more difficult, but trying to learn an instrument, like reading the new language that is sheet music, along with getting in a new building, learning all your teachers, having to actually rotate classes instead of having, I believe in fifth grade, it's you switch between two teachers. Now you have to switch between three sometimes, and then there's specials in it. Forgot the other one they have. And that's just a lot of stress to put on someone in addition to trying to get them to learn music. And I don't think that it would be fair to also say that, oh, you have to try and learn band in addition to that. I think a lot of people would quit, or if they were in fifth grade, they would have stick, stuck with it. And then also going from fifth to the sixth grade, I was in the fifth-grade band, and there were seven trumpets? Yeah, when I was in fifth grade, there were seven trumpets, and by the time we were in sixth grade, we got to two, and that's just because of the increase in workload and how many people can do it. And I think it's really important that if we want to maintain a music program, that we start in the fifth grade when it is easier to join than if we start at a later time when the stress of schoolwork is increased on top of trying to learn an instrument. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Shashana Muley, 139 Cove Road. I appreciate the number of hours you've spent staring at spreadsheets. So I just want to start with that, and I appreciate that you are the superintendent of the entire school district. I have to say about these kids, these kids are the product of Lunenburg Public Schools. They're also the product of the Lunenburg Music Department that was, um, led by a teacher who you guys all knew well, who was there for 20 years. And she instilled a standard of excellence in these kids. That's what you're seeing there. That's where the passion and the commitment was driven home. I mean, it, this is, I'm wasting my three minutes, but after their marching band performances at, you know, 10 o'clock at night, after they put all their instruments away and they're exhausted, would be a 10-minute conversation. And at the end of that is they yell pride because of the standard of excellence. So that's why these kids are here. That woman has moved on to a really great opportunity, um, would have loved to have kept her in Lunenburg. The situation with the enrollment in the high school music classes, so the musicators had a meeting with Mr. Santri and Mrs. Tussignot last year, and there was discussion of a grant to study the blocks that are this scheduling mystery, because I wouldn't say that enrollment would be doubled, but there are at least three or four kids who haven't been in high school concert band because of scheduling conflicts with things like honors English and honors math and Latin, and so... And so I get the numbers aren't there, but it's that, it's also the chicken and the egg of, there were two years, I don't know if it was two or three years, I guess two and a half years, where the middle school kids didn't get to play their instruments in a band like they would have because of COVID. And so those are your tenth and eleventh graders right now. There's maybe one or two in the band and chorus in high school, so those other kids still got to do art. They still got to have art class. The music kids did not get to do it. The last thing I want to say with regards to, I know there was discussion about the idea of private lessons being available, even if they didn't have to be paid for.
Ten seconds.
The equity, as far as having before school or something instead of a fifth grade band or chorus in school, is just such a huge equity problem for so many reasons. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Hi, I'm Cecilia Stanek. I live at four eighty-three Hollis Road in Lunenburg, Massachusetts. Music is everywhere in our lives, and not just with people in band or chorus, but as a whole. Music is a part of everyone's day-to-day function, and music are things that people look forward to. Some people with social anxiety feel like band and chorus is more of a community than a class. The pandemic not only put me, but other members in my school behind a screen, which affected not only me, but others. If I could have gone to band in fifth grade, I absolutely would have. I feel like fifth grade is such an important jumpstart to our music interests, and cutting any band could result in a smaller interest for future students. During intervention in fifth grade, I never had it. I was behind a screen. Nowadays, I would like to say band is not the same as lessons. You can't expect to get the same enthusiasm when not practicing as a whole. When in a group, band, not lessons, you learn teamwork as a whole and build your overall social development, so please relook the amount of benefits coming from just lessons before making your final decision.
Hello, my name is Emma Borushian. I live at three eighty-nine Malpus Road. Expressing yourself with music can make you feel limitless. Taking these feelings away, especially from fifth graders, can limit their exposure to the music they should be able to learn. Band and choir both teach commitment, passion, determination, and persistence. I know that if I wasn't exposed to music when I was eight years old, I wouldn't be in band right now, and it's really crazy to think about because when I'm younger, it's like, when you're young, you're able to learn it faster, and like, you're just able to experience it and really internalize it. And when, five years ago, when I was eight years old, learning piano by myself, I never really knew about the band experience, and I really wanted to do that when I was in sixth grade, but I was too scared. And I feel like that in fifth grade, you're able to experience that, and you're really able to know, okay, this is what I want to do when I'm older, because when we go perform at the Turkey Hill School, we're there to show them what we know, and we're there to show them that, hey, you can do this in middle school and high school, and it's an amazing experience. I feel strongly that cutting the fifth grade band will decrease the numbers in our middle and high school band, and it'll be just so hard to recruit new students and be able to learn. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry. Mary Foyle, nine eight-five Flat Hill Road. This is actually to the viewing public. So I've taught civics for the past few years. I'm not teaching it currently, but it was great sitting back there. It felt like a mini civics class on its own, and I think these kids just really challenged the adults in our town to start showing up as well, so I encourage people to show up to town meeting. Some of us even play a little game of like bingo, like, when's your bingo card full for who's speaking? I'm slowly becoming that person. That's it. Maybe I'll make some and sell them for a fundraiser in there, but I'm challenging people. It's sad to see that it's tough times that have to bring people out, but I hope people get more actively involved in this. I hope it's not like just a speak up now, and then, okay, problem solved. You know, community only works if you work together as a community. When I taught civics, I always said town government only works if people are actually doing the work. And so I appreciate people who are doing the work, but we have jobs to do too, even if we're not sitting on committees. It is part of our job to make the schools work, to make the community work, so I challenge people to show up for that. Okay. As a teacher, speaking just as a high school teacher in this moment, we just had a faculty meeting, and I'm a systems person, and so with these cuts, as people have said, you know, it's hard to make them, and I think we really have to start looking at, why are we in this situation, and how do we improve for the future? It's what I've said before. Looking at over five teachers cut from the high school, you're like, okay, five teachers, that's at least twenty-seven classes on our schedule. Twenty-seven classes. That's a really large number. I've lived in town for fourteen years. I now have a high school, I have a high school student, and I've said this before, ten years ago, five years ago, I'm really, really concerned that we're not going to have a comprehensive high school anymore, that we're going to have a core high school, and as a parent, that is not the school I want for my child. And I teach here, I should be one of the most invested people in this school system with the roles that I fill, especially in the high school, and I'm having serious thoughts of, is this the right place for my student to be? And I don't like that that's a thought I have to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Borushian, three eighty-nine Malpus. Again, thank you all. I'm a CPA. I understand what you've been doing with the budget, so I feel for you, I get it, but I'm really scared about next year. If we're making these kinds of cuts now to get to bare minimum, that you got to two and a half percent is really something, but I'm really scared of what the conversation will be next year, and which teachers will be getting cut and going to a core school. Very proud of the students who spoke tonight. Emma is our Project Three Fifty-One student as well, so they put themselves out there tonight, and they put themselves out there every time they take the stage and they take the field. Band has given them the confidence to do this, and I ask you to imagine a football game without the band, the homecoming parade without the band, or the tree lighting without the carols. Please find a way to make this work. I really implore you to do that, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Again, Dave Passios, fifty-six Whiting Street. I'm gonna keep pretty much all my comments as a citizen and taxpayer in Lunenburg. I am on the finance committee, and I will be here tomorrow night, probably half the night. First of all, I have a question that was asked in public comment, I believe, in a finance committee meeting, and I'm not sure that it's ever been answered, I don't need the answer immediately, but the mention of the student body at forty percent plus participation, I believe that was in the high school that the superintendent mentioned, and the question was, and I have the same question, is that forty percent of the bodies figured against the total population, or is that if you have a student who is in three sports, they're counted as three students? Makes a huge difference.
That would be per season.
Excuse me?
Each season, we have about forty percent participation.
So does that mean?
So they're not double or triple counted. Each season, we report the participation.
But are they in more than one sport in any one given season?
In any one season, no.
So it might even be higher than forty percent because some kids might only do...
There was a request for clarification of that, that's all, and I'm still not clear what the number means.
Okay.
It's just one of the things that popped in as it was mentioned. The other thing is, and you may just be able to point me in the direction of a website to get this, I know every year that the school district is required to report their total population to the state sometime in September, October, I believe.
October one.
October one.
It's submitted later than October one, it's the count as of October one.
Is there easy access to a spreadsheet that shows our population over the past five to ten years? All grades?
We include that in our budget presentation, so that exists.
Okay. I don't know if anybody saw it, but I posted the student population from nineteen fifty-three to fifty-something or another.
I think we grew.
Excuse me?
I think we grew.
Just a little bit. Yeah, just a little bit, and the numbers were incredible. I mean, we went from, I don't know, and we were regional school district actually back then, too, fifty-three, fifty-five, with Townsend and Ashby. Okay, so I will get that information at some point.
Yep.
Solution. The other thing, the other question I have, and we went through this on the town side, wondering, is certain departments are kind of split between policy elected boards and paid staff that develop their budgets, and for the longest time, or for a number of years, those boards were not included in the budget process. Something that came to mind, listening to you guys talk about the superintendent and the management team working through these issues, I remember my dad, different time, I understand that, and maybe you can't do this now, but he sat down with the staff and said, here's our challenge. What are your ideas? Help me work through this. I'm wondering if the management team is doing that without fear of retribution to the paid employees of the district. I don't want an answer, I'm just throwing it out there as, you know, that's a big part. In manufacturing, I spent almost half a century in manufacturing, and when management didn't listen to the people working on the floor with the equipment, there were all kinds of problems, but when they did, problems were solved.
Okay, thank you.
Last thing is a public service announcement tomorrow evening. The, one of the agenda items on the finance committee agenda is a very serious and deep-dive discussion into creating a grant-writing position, at least on the town side, or maybe a shared position, both sides. Really been no discussions as to what it might look like, but we're gonna be formulating a letter to the board of selectmen and the town manager. We actually had a vote two weeks ago to push this recommendation forward from the finance committee, and we're gonna more formalize it tomorrow evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Not seeing any hands on Zoom, certainly.
TJ Loughlin, two oh seven Rolling Acres. Thanks for everything you do. I've sent you guys a bunch of emails, so you're probably already aware of all my questions, and I'm just gonna reiterate them publicly, really. Which I'll just, the magic word is spreadsheet. I think a lot of us are talking about a spreadsheet, and I just wanted to show some examples of why I think that would be important. I think in this meeting, assuming I heard the numbers correctly, the health insurance is coming in at half of what we expected, and yet we're still having the impact, even though I think at the beginning of this process, we said insurance is a big impact to us at the ten percent or more, but now that it's half of that, we're still talking at the same intensity. Where did we gain by that half, right? So, one of the other things I heard, and I think I might have misheard, is with some suggestions from Brian Anthony, is readding the music janitors and maintenance. I think that was said to go up to potentially six percent again, if we were to re-add those from two and a half percent. It's a three and a half percent increase, I think, if I heard that right. Just add music, the janitors, the maintenance back. Hard to understand that without the spreadsheet, to say that huge percentage for that, you know, half FTE position increased the percentage that much. And then the other one is just the music program in general. I think it's hard, like Laura, you're saying, I'm not saying your last name, so I don't butcher them, I'm sorry. But I think it's hard to hear the impact, is if we hear, you know, cutting the music program at half FTE, how much are we actually saving by cutting that program? Is it a huge amount? Is it not a huge amount? It's, we're just taking that and saying, we need to do this, but we don't really know the impact. When we talk middle school sports, a lot of the families were saying, we're paying for middle school sports, so how are we reconciling those numbers? And I think that spreadsheet would really help us be on the same page, to agree with you guys and to see why you're making these cuts, because I know they're not easy, but that spreadsheet with those numbers would help us be on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm thinking that we are all talked out, so, yes.
Can I do a public comment on the sports participation?
You can.
So, just because we've had a meeting before, and I still have the file from a discussion on winter sports participation, twenty-three, twenty-four, and also the fall, the fall data as well, but the winter, we had two hundred students participating at the high school level, and in the fall, there was a hundred and eighty-four students participating at the high school level, and it was a forty percent, forty percent for the fall. It doesn't have the percentage for the winter, but there was literally more students, so, but there could be definitely students that play a fall sport as well as a winter sport.
Sure.
Just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Okay, I think we are ready to look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for coming, everyone.
Thank you, guys. Sat through this whole thing.